Well, we have the, we have the King Kamaya here if we don't have issues. He hides in the back corner because he's always called.
Wow, I see they got all the dirtwork in that.
You're going to town?
That's a big building, but I came by there to say wow.
Oh, I agree.
Did he, did BP help him then?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't think they're members, I think.
Probably not, but they could have still helped him and became a member. We do that one.
I guess I don't know.
I'm gonna ask, uh, Grady, I see you join us. Can you, uh, what kind of time constraints you have this morning, Grady?
Um, I've got, I've got a little bit of time here.
You're, you're good. Okay, so we'll try and get, get started with you really soon, so, yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Nine o'clock, we call the county board to order. We've got a flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Benoit?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here remotely.
Thank you.
Approve or amend the agenda. I see we got some changes.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, uh, we have consent items number five and number six. Uh, the first is the S K G K Ventures Mini Mart tobacco license. That's agenda consent item number five. The next is the Northern Oaks Events, uh, on sale, uh, Sunday liquor license as a consent item number six. Consent item number six. Uh, you have two regular items. One is a letter of support for Avivo Village. If you could please add that, um, as the last item under county administrator. That's nine oh five, last item under county administrator. Chris Bird has item under county surveyor. You could add that. It's his last item at nine forty-five, uh, county surveyor for Chris. And those are the changes we have.
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Do we need to call roll?
Yes. Roll call votes on all, yes.
All right.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Thank you.
Announcements by the board chair. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that your views can be heard. The county board observes the Roberts Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or public hearing. However, however, public comments on agenda items may be allowed by the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today's meeting, please turn yourselves off or to vibrate. Thank you. Um, any, nope. Consent agenda, we have items one through six. Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Been moved and approved, items one through six. Any other discussion? All in favor, all call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Monty Hedley?
Mrs. Chair, uh, we have a retirement award to present this morning. I believe Courtney is going to do the honors for us, for Sally.
All right. And Beth has the camera?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So today is a bittersweet day. Um, we have, um, a celebration and honor for Sally Murray, who has dedicated almost twenty-five remarkable years of service in our WIC program here at Benton County. Um, the WIC program, or Women, Infants, and Children. Um, it's a supplemental program that helps eligible families through the nutrition, education, and counseling, and referrals to health and other social services. For almost twenty-five years, Sally has not only supported families, but also has been a mentor, a friend, and a constant source of positivity and dedication to all of us at Benton County. She has worked to ensure that the families who walk through our doors receive not just the care that they need, but the compassion that they deserve. We've seen firsthand how much of an impact Sally has on so many lives. It is something that we will carry forward. As you retire, Sally, we want you to know that your hard work, care, and commitment to continue, will continue to inspire us. We will miss your presence here, but we'll also be excited for you as you begin this new chapter of life. On behalf of our entire public health team and everyone here at Benton County, and the families that you've helped over the years, thank you for everything. You've set a high standard for all of us, and we're forever grateful for the time and energy and love that you give to this program. Please join me in congratulating Sally for almost twenty-five years of outstanding service and the exciting adventures that lie ahead.
Awesome. Congratulations.
All right, we need to come down for pictures. Oh, you have to come down for a picture.
Sorry, I didn't tell you that.
Well, I could have told you that.
Everyone gets the treatment. Congratulations.
Why, thank you. I, you know, I never ever thought it would be that person saying, I've worked so hard.
So did you start in, you did you start in, probably girl?
Um, I started in, in WIC, background's nutrition, so I, yeah.
Wow, twenty-five years. That's awesome.
Sorry, okay.
All right.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, we forgot to include Jared in the picture.
Yep. At least he was smiling.
Okay, uh, legislative update from?
We'll invite Grady to give us an update on what's going on at the Capitol, specifically on bonding and in our sales tax exemption. Any other updates you would like to share with us, Grady, please?
Thanks, Monty, and good morning, Mr. Chair and commissioners. Um, a brief update on the current state of play in St. Paul. Um, I'm sure you've been following it in the media as well. Um, but the legislature returns today from a short, long weekend break for, um, for Eid. First and second committee deadlines are this Friday, which means, um, all policy bills must clear committees in both chambers um, by five P M. on Friday. So we expect a lot of late night committee meetings, um, trying to get everything pushed through. The finance committees will be working on assembling their budget bills for third deadline, which is April eleventh. Um, so just a week away from this Friday. Um, just to keep in mind, there are no committee deadlines for taxes or bonding. As you also may have noticed, um, in early March, uh, the M M B released its updated forecasts. Um, projected a four hundred and fifty-six million surplus for fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, a reduction of a hundred and sixty million from the November forecast. Um, they're citing changes in policies at the federal level, um, as, as one of the reasons. In twenty-eight and twenty-nine biennium, the shortfall grows from five point one billion to six billion. Um, with that, the governor released his revised, uh, budget proposal, um, and it cuts an additional a hundred and sixty-two million from the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, and two hundred and forty-seven million, um, in the second year of the biennium. Um, one of the things to make note for the county in the governor's proposal is he, um, revised his budget for additional cuts for state, some state grant programs. One being, um, the PILT program, which is payments in lieu of taxes, uh, that goes to counties. Um, so just of note, it looks like, uh, in my research, Benton County received sixty-three thousand, a hundred and eighty-four dollars in those grants in twenty-twenty-four. Um, some counties are looking at orbitations to this degree, so, uh, Monty, I can follow up with you on, on that. Last week, the House and Senate released their targets, and they are not global targets, so, um, they have a lot of negotiating to do, uh, to work out a final deal over the last couple, um, or the next couple of weeks. The House, uh, makes a net cut of fourteen million in baseline spending for twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, notably, the tax target has a net change of forty million in either tax increases or reductions in tax expenditures and related programs. Um, in, over in the Senate, uh, they had a revised, um, target of, that cuts two hundred and twenty-seven million to transportation-related projects, and a net change of three hundred and sixty-five million in tax increases or reductions in expenditures for tax-related aid programs. Uh, so we'll be watching that closely. Um, again, these numbers are not, um, they're not global, meaning they have not, they're gonna have to come to agreement between both bodies, um, which could become a challenge as we move forward. On the bonding side of things, um, in the Senate, um, the debt service and the tails is for one point three billion in the first biennium, um, and not have anything in the second, where the House is looking at a seven hundred million dollar, uh, bonding bill. And that, again, will be negotiated as we get towards end of session discussions. One thing to highlight, and you probably saw it in the news, um, there's a vacated Senate seat with the resignation of Senator Justin Icarne, um, due to arrest of solicitation of a minor. Um, there'll be a special election on April twenty-ninth with a primary on April fifteenth. So that could change some of the dynamics in the Senate as well. Um, there are multiple candidates, I think six Republican candidates and two Democrats, um, all competing for that seat. Um, looking ahead, before I get into a little, uh, specific on our bills, um, as I mentioned, the deadlines, uh, this Friday and next Friday, um, and then the legislature goes on break for Passover, um, and Easter. They'll be coming back on the twenty-second at noon. And I'd encourage, um, the board to, um, we'd like to facilitate some sort of a, a Capitol visit those last two weeks of the month. Um, so after, uh, the twenty-second at noon through May second, I think that would be timely, um, with bonding discussions, uh, to get, to wave the flag and to, to get in front of, um, our delegation and, uh, committee chairs. On our bills, um, our Senate file for the refundable sales and lease tax exemption, um, we actually have two of them. Uh, Senator Howe did his, um, as well as Senator Weisenberg. They're cloned bills, so it's the same language. Uh, Senator Weisenberg's bill, Senate File nine fifty-seven, was laid over for consideration. And, uh, just was in touch this morning, um, over in the House side with Representative Schultz's office, and pushing to get a hearing. Um, the House is a little behind due to their delay in getting hearings on local projects. Um, but we do anticipate that coming soon, and, and again, there's no deadlines for taxes or bonding. Um, so we're, we're pushing hard for that hearing in the House, um, especially now that the target for the Senate, um, for tax, um, on taxes is, is a little bit of a concern that we'll watch closely. And so we'd like to get that laid over in the House as well. Um, on the bonding bill, um, Senator Pappas has indicated that she does not plan to have any hearings on bills this session. Um, so I think she's trying to make up with some of the bills that were introduced previously, um, but we'll see, see how that goes. And we're continuing to push for a hearing if she's willing to do one. On the House side, um, they're getting into local projects. I reached out to the Republican Chair last week and, and pushed for a hearing, and I have been touching with our authors as well to, uh, give them a push, uh, to get the bill here. Um, but we will anticipate over the next few weeks, um, hearings on, on both of those, um, our bills. With that, I think, um, that's probably the, the quickest update I can give you today. If there are any questions, I'll turn it over to the board.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I could, Grady, um, will you be reaching out towards the, after April twenty-second to set up some potential dates and times, maybe a couple, three options?
Mr. Chair, Monty, yes, I'll be in touch with you and, uh, and we will, um, get that set up. I think if we could get a few commissioners to come down, um, over those two, those two weeks, and then maybe one more touch towards the end of session, um, would be, would be good timing. But I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's what's needed, so. Ken, thank you enough, Grady, for what you're actually doing for us. We truly appreciate it.
Appreciate your legwork, Grady.
Yep.
Thank you so much. We'll keep, uh, pounding hard and, and hopefully, uh, we can get, uh, some good compromise done in the next, uh, couple of months of session. I would note that, um, based on the dynamics in the tied house, um, there could be, uh, I think it could go into special session, most likely, um, and maybe a lights-on funding, uh, budget initially. Uh, but we'll keep our eye on it and keep you informed.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I got one more question for Grady. So on the bonding bill, they said that they're not gonna do any more hearings, uh, they're just gonna look at the previous ones that were put in front of them?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, yes, um, that's on the Senate side.
Okay.
Um, in the House, they're still having hearings, so we're pushing to get that, um, heard and, and on bonding. It, it ultimately comes down kind of to the last hour, um, where your delegation is critical in, in getting their projects funded. Um, so we'll continue to push on both sides on that front.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks, Grady.
Thank you, Grady.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Monty?
Uh, Jackie Travis, here with the next item. Please, Jackie, thank you. Uh, Jackie?
We're gonna just wanna share screen too, so Commissioner Kapinski?
Okay. All right, let me get it pulled up.
Do you wanna do that part? Share screen part?
Yep. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
I am here on behalf of a group of, from a group of us from the management team. Um, a little history on why I'm here is, when we did our, um, survey with employee strategies on the county culture, one of the questions was asked about knowing our values and knowing if our values were applied to our work. Um, there were quite a few staff that didn't feel that our values were applied to their work or didn't know what our values were. So the management team as a whole sat down and we refreshed our mission, vision, and value statement. Um, and I believe that was previously presented to you, but as the management team created these new values and mission and, um, vision statements, we wanted to push them out. Um, we wanted to broadcast it, really put it out there. And one of the things that we thought maybe that would help is if we kind of refreshed our logo. Um, so we worked with White Box on creating a new logo for Benton County. Um, so up on the screen here is what we came up with. Um, we wanted something that was simple, clean, but just a little different from what we had before. And you can see there's a, a variety of different logos, and I guess we're not just creating one logo here, but more of, um, a concept. Um, and we would use these different logos based on what we were producing at that time. So, um, we just wanna present our idea here to kind of get your input and approval so we can continue to move forward. So here's kind of the logo, and then one of the things that we had asked, um, that's been recently updated from what's in your board packet is, we didn't really ex, like, the primary color palette that was presented, so we just asked for, um, an updated color palette, and that's what is here. And these colors would be used if you needed more than one color, like, say, you're doing a PowerPoint or a graph or something. These would be the primary colors that we would use when presenting that. And then they also kind of showed on the bottom half that if we needed to add, um, like, if public health has their own logo and they would wanna add that, what it would look like with the Benton County logo plus an additional departmental logo. Any questions on that at all? Or feedback for the group?
Mr. Chair, I like the public service part in there that you're recognizing. I think, obviously, that's why we're all here.
Right. We really wanted to get our mission statement in there, and they did a great job of putting that in there for us.
I think it looks good. I like the color scheme.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Looks good to me. So, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As we're, as we're going through this, Jackie, and you got the top one, that's three different logos, and then you got the, the kind of beige one?
Yes.
Are those, are those like two different options, or would that all be, you know, we use them at any time?
I think the idea here was we would mainly focus on the top, which is our primary color palette. The secondary would be more so used, like, um, say you're doing two bar graphs, and you needed more color options. Then we would say, well, then you would resort to the secondary color palette as your additional options for colors. But we would mainly focus on the top, which is our primary color palette.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, Jackie, just to verify, I know you have examples there, but like on the right in the beige, Benton County and Benton Economic Partnership is when those two are working together on something. You'd have both logos there.
Yeah, we wanted White Box just to give us an example of what it might look like. For example, if the Sheriff's Department has their own logo that they wanna put, but we still want them to use the main Benton County logo. So they just kind of gave us a couple of examples of what that may look like.
Great. That's good.
And that's something we'd want, the main logo, but then other departments on the side.
Yeah.
Yeah, so going forward, we wanna use this on letterhead, PowerPoints, um, clothing, putting it on the side of vehicles, any place where we would typically see the Benton County symbol.
Website.
Website, yes, I know that I T.'s working on revamping the website, so we would use this new, um, color scheme and logo.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, uh, Jackie, I assume that this would be kind of like a, uh, on, on vehicles, as we get a new vehicle, we would take it, put them on? Or are we thinking that we take and relogo everything right away?
I guess we haven't really discussed that part in the management team. I guess we wanted to first make sure before we move forward that you approved of the concept that we had before you.
Right, I appreciate that, Jared, because if you do all of them right away, that comes with a cost.
Right.
Yeah, I think it makes sense just to gradually over time.
Yeah.
Incorporate the new logo, right? You buy a new truck, you buy, yeah. Right, and scraping the old ones off, right, yeah, so. In twenty years, Chris will have them all on the. About twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for?
Or it might be forty.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the new logo design.
Sec.
Most men made in second it.
I, I just wanna make sure I acknowledge, uh, all the folks that are involved in this effort. Jackie, of course, uh, Jaclyn, uh, um, Beth, uh, Jeff Dingman, was that, was that the group that was involved? Did I miss anyone?
Yep.
Steve Sting, of course. Gotta make sure, and I, and I should say, uh, this is a result of many meetings with, with White Box and lots of discussion and various options, iterations to arrive at this. So this was well thought out, and I appreciate this group of folks stepping up and, and taking on this project.
Yeah, but I think the county board thanks you for doing that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Exactly.
Time and effort into it.
So we do have a motion and a second, so, do you wanna call the roll?
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Thank you.
I almost missed Steve. It's okay.
Go ahead.
All right. I believe the next item on your agenda is the G L T Agreement for Architectural Services. So, uh, quite some time ago, the board approved an initial agreement with G L T, but that was really for the initial phases. For example, the space studies and what they call, uh, schematic design and so on. So you kind of remember all that work to kind of start with a blank piece of paper and then come up with what a building would look like. This new agreement is essentially an amendment to that and takes us through to final, uh, design, uh, some actual, uh, construction observation, and then the last, the final, uh, s, uh, a, a project would be what they call commissioning. And commissioning means they bring someone in to make sure everything works exactly as it's supposed to. So, uh, this would again take us through essentially completion, uh, of the project with G L T. Um, in the agenda item, you can see that, uh, the, uh, agreement includes what's known as basic services, which is six percent of the project cost. That's one point five million. Uh, Evan also threw into the agreement a possible, uh, additional work for, uh, uh, what we call Phase Two, which was, which is what do we do with the old building? Do we create a parking lot there and so on? So that's the design work associated with creating, uh, parking for the new building. And then lastly, there's the commissioning part. Um, and I, I, that certainly makes, as Evan described that to me, that makes total sense, because you think about it, this building has so many complex systems in it. You wanna make sure everything is working when they hand you the keys, that it's all working very well. Um, I noted there how much we paid so far, so there's remained balance, about one point one million to be paid. Uh, so we're now in, in, in frankly, the much more intensive phases of design, where they're devoting enormous amounts of hours to the final design, uh, and the, what they call the, the plan sheets for, that would be used to put this project out to bid. So, uh, some of those larger bills are, will be coming in. I mentioned a little asterisk, everything has an asterisk. Uh, there's possible additional services, uh, at the board's discretion if you choose to, to, to use G L T for that. For example, the furniture design, uh, do you wanna use them to help you design the layout of all the office furniture? Or do we do that as our own matter? We certainly could. Uh, they include in here a cost for the furniture design if you choose to use them, but we could certainly choose another vendor for the furniture design. And landscape design is another one. They could do that for us, or we could choose another vendor for that. That can come later. That can come later. So I believe that's it, Mr. Chair. Uh, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, obviously, I think we're all getting a lot of concern on this, uh, with, uh, with, you know, the taxes and everything like that. I just wanna make sure that the, the public knows, just by authorizing this, doesn't make, it doesn't put the building going forward. It, it finishes up the design, and if anything gets, you know, halted after that, when numbers come in, i- if this isn't, this isn't assuring the building is going through, is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Correct. This is part of the process to get to a final number of, of what the true building's gonna cost.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could, just for clarification, Monty, and I think Jared referenced it a little bit, is that this would be what the cost would be if the building was built and finished at some point. This is the final G L T cost. Obviously, we're not gonna incur all these costs if we don't move forward with the building.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, yes, so, uh, this again takes us through final construction, commissioning. As I noted, there, there's some possible supplemental costs that could be over and above the number I have here if you choose to use G L T for those. Again, like furniture design and landscape design, so that number could be a bit higher if you use them. I wanted to mention, I'm looking actually, it's on page twenty-three of the agreement. So basically, uh, this is gonna take us through the, the development of all the construction documents and bidding. And that takes us through roughly eighty percent of G L T.'s total fees. So what's left after bidding is again the, the last twenty percent. So you, you, the number you see there on my agenda item, we're gonna, we'll, we'll go through about eighty percent of that number to get to bidding. Eighty percent of that number.
Monty, when will, will bidding take place, before or after our public hearing?
Uh, after. After, right, in other words, we'll receive the. In other words, we'll receive those bids after. Right, so the, the public hearing and CIP is scheduled for May 6th.
Right.
If I recall correctly, uh, we won't be seeing those bids until sometime in June. Like after, yeah, sometime around mid-June, I believe, if I recall correctly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
And just for the record and, and stuff, I, I think, I, I want to make a statement that, that basically says, I'm not in it to just spend the taxpayers' money. I'm really not. This is, we gotta, we gotta do a very good job of explaining that not only, we're kind of stuck with one of two options, either do this building or bring the existing building up to code. Because when we start digging into the elevator, that triggers another code violation. And, and the public doesn't understand that right now, and we just got to make sure we're doing a very good job explaining that moving forward in all of these, uh, these open houses and, and these, the road show that we're doing at the, at the city halls. Because I talked to quite a few people last week, they don't, they didn't understand that, oh, this isn't, either we do the building or not do the building. This is either we do the building or we got to start doing all these upgrades that is going to be, you know, half to three quarters of the cost of doing a building.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
And, and that's a good point, Commissioner Kapinski, because I had, took a lot of phone calls yesterday too, trying to explain, you know, to the residents what this is all about, what it details. And, and you're correct, you are correct. We need to be specific about everything.
Right, and I think I was pretty upfront with everybody I talked to that we will spend some money. It's just a matter of how much you want us to spend. You know, um, some see it and some don't, you know? It depends on who you are. But we're gonna have to do something down the road, no matter what we do.
And I think Tim did a good job of explaining that in the paper. I appreciate that.
Yep, I, I agree. I want to thank Tim, you know, for what you put in the paper. Accurate. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and, 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 and just to clarify, you know, a lot of these code, th- these code deals are not brought on by us. If we could go status quo and not, if, if we were told, oh, we don't want a building and we, we're gonna keep what we have until we can do a building, that's great, but these codes are brought down above us. So we start digging in, like we said, the elevator, that's, you know, $75,000 bringing it up to code. Well, there's electrical, mechanic, all that stuff in there, and that triggers other things. So I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Pop, you know, you know, it's how much money we want it or they want us to spend. We don't really have that option because when we start digging into these things, it triggers other code violations that we're gonna have to bring up within a certain amount of time. So it's, it's a, it's a double edged sword.
And correct, Mr. Kapinski, when you start bringing up those code violations and you add into other factors, those costs have to be done right away for upgrade.
And we lose that bottom, the, the basement or the lower level.
Yep.
In there, it's gonna trigger a lot more space that we need finding somewhere.
Yep, very good point.
And, and Mr. Chair, that, that doesn't even hardly touch on what we're going to be spending in the interim to get to either one of those spots. I mean, we've got significant capital improvement dollars that
Yep.
will be spent until we get to a remodel or a building, so. So you're looking for.
It's a tough, it's a tough situation. I, I, I have 100% of, of a gift where the taxpayers are at. I mean, you hear them in these ditch meetings, you hear them, you know, on, you know, just in the, in the, on the street or in the grocery store, you hear people talking about it. It, it's, it's a horrible situation we're in right now.
Didn't, I got a question while I was around that. So did anybody get a call from the letter that was in the tax statements?
I did not.
I got one. That was the concern, you know? Had no idea.
They had no idea what was going on, yeah.
Well, hope, you know, hopefully when we have these open houses that we actually have people come.
Well, and that's a great example to my point of our last meeting is we've got to figure out a way to get the public involved and educated.
Look at ditches.
Yes, I know.
You know, I think, you know, I think we got the attention of the ditches because the letters went out and the bill's in the mail, you know? And that's what will hap- probably happen here is, you know?
Time will tell.
Time will tell. So do you need a motion on that?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve the revised agreement with GLT Architects for Final Design, Construction Documents, Bidding, Construction Observation, and Final Building Commissioning.
Sir, a second.
Somebody.
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Kapinski?
It's been moved and seconded. Monty, I guess my question is that how much more of the 500, to the 566,000 do we have to pay, do you think, before the end of June?
So, so Mr. Chair, when it's all said and done, when we, to get us through bidding, it's going to be 80% of the 1.5 million dollar number. So if someone has a calculator, 1 million five, 1.5 million times point eight, that's what we're gonna pay to get us through to bidding. So that's, that will be the total, right?
1.2.
1.2. I can't do math in my head, sorry.
1.2.
1.2 is 80%.
Right. So, uh, take 1.2 million mi- minus 566 and that's what's le- that's what's left, uh, that we'll pay between now and getting us out to bid. As I mentioned, they're in this incredibly intensive period right now where they're devoting tremendous hours to this project. And again, it's not just GLT, but it's also the structural engineer, the mechanical engineer, it's all those folks in it that are also involved.
You know, that might be a number that's gonna come up at the, at the public hearing.
You know, being in the construction field, this is not new to me, but this is new to everybody else of the process you have to go through to try to figure out a number.
Well, I was looking at what the Sock Rabbit School did, and now they're first going out to design and that, and they've already approved, you know, 57 million dollars. You know, they don't have all this money tied up in design and, but they have more money tied up in promotion than we did.
They're gonna, they're gonna have that money.
They will. But they already got approval of the funding.
But it was kind of laid out of what, you know, that's just, uh, up to, up to.
Up to, yeah. It's gonna be a part of their cost.
That's right.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second.
On, on the, one, one last, uh, one last note.
Sure.
One of the, one of the things we got to realize is at some point, whether it's now or later on, we're gonna need to do a building. And these, a lot of this money that we're spending right now can be refurbished, you know? Re- down the road. Now, is there gonna be different codes that they're gonna have to go back through? Absolutely. But the general design is still there and, and so if we spend 1.2 million, it's, it's not, it's not a, they might have to redo a couple hundred thousand of that, just a problem.
And to your point, Commissioner Kapinski, that's something we talked about with GLT right up front, was if we don't do this, how much of this will, will be able to reuse?
Good, good point, that it's not totally just kicked out the window.
No.
It, it is a good point, but just remember, the prices go up 3% to 5% every year.
Sure.
Every year. Because we've, we found that out.
Right.
You know, by delaying this a little bit.
Yeah, it's not gonna get cheaper.
Of what it went up, you know, so. Price will never go down.
Okay, Beth?
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Avivo Village?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, an organization known as Avivo Village plans to build a homeless shelter in St. Cloud. And I'm, I'm, you know, I, I thought you folks had been aware of that for a while. I understand they actually plan to break ground this summer. They did receive a fairly large state grant to help with that construction. To help with the operating costs, Avivo is seeking legislation that would allow them to receive a supplemental, uh, group housing rate, uh, from the state. It's currently, a bill has been introduced in the House, and they ask if you could, uh, offer a letter of support for this legislation, House File 1579. In addition to, I believe the current group residential housing rate is 1,001.70, if my notes are correct. This asks for a supplemental rate on top of that of 9.75. And as you see in the letter, uh, Avivo Village provides very intensive services, um, to its residents, and I think for, in, in their view, that justifies the higher supplemental rate, given the intensive nature of those services. I understand correctly, they have a fairly high staffing ratio, uh, and that is a lot of the reason for the need for the supplemental rate. And I, from my participation in meetings with this group, is they feel that this supplemental rate is essential for them to be able to operate this facility in St. Cloud. So it's just been, again, asking, uh, a letter of support from us, and they've asked Sherwin County and Stearns County as well for the same letter of support.
Mr. Chair, so this also means no commitment yet from the county then financially?
That's true, and, and none have been made. They've been having regular means, I have attended a few of those and, and, but no, I have not seen anyone step forward and commit, of course, county resources to this at this point.
Right, because, just because they sign a letter of resource doesn't mean we're committing resources. I mean, I want nothing to do with this if it's gonna be county resources going into it.
Right, yep.
Just so that's on the record that. I mean, it seems like an awful big ask, almost double what you, what the average housing rate is. I just, I can't see that it's even feasible, but.
Again, I think goes to, to the mischires that, you know, they deal with the folks who have some significant challenges in their lives, and it takes a fairly high staffing ratio to adequately manage that facility so those people are successful and moving on.
Yeah. Yeah, it, you know, it, it is needed, but.
So if they, if they don't get the additional fund, are they gonna scrap the project or what's the?
But sure, I know, sure, I know the answer to that. I, I, they have said that, portrayed this as essential to the operation of the facility. So I, I, I guess time will tell, you know, what, what their Plan B would be if they don't get this legislation.
Okay.
Motion to authorize the board chair to sign the letter of support for Avivo.
I'll second.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
You're muted.
There you go. You good, Jared?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Troy Heck, but I think we got a substitute today, right?
Commissioners and Administrator.
Morning.
Edley, good morning.
Morning.
It is my privilege and honor to be here, um, to make my, or to make the annual request to approve the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Benton County. I know it's a mouthful, but we ask for this every single year. I am here asking for this, um, on behalf of some really fabulous miracle workers, really, for the county. I have a staff right now of 10 people. One is an intermittent part-timer that just joined with us, and I have experience levels from three months. I've got a brand-new dispatcher starting and training, all the way up to 30 years. We're very top-heavy with experience there. I have mo- with the majority of my staff coming in at over 50. Apologies from Sheriff Heck. He is much more of an eloquent speaker than I am because at heart, what I am is a public safety dispatcher, a communications officer, you know, call taker, you can call us what you will, but that's, that's where my heart lies. I'm extremely proud of the work that my folks do. Nationally, the week between April 13th to the 19th is our day, or our week. This is when we celebrate the folks that work at the public safety answering points. They're the unseen heroes. You hear about them, you hear their voices, you don't know who they are. They just do all the work behind the scenes, right? They keep our citizenry ship safe, they keep our agencies safe, our first responders safe. They go through a lot. They have an incredibly difficult job. It is becoming incredibly more so with each year. The technology expansion that we're dealing with right now is astounding, and these guys are just keeping up. It's amazing. Now, whether you call them call takers, radio operators, dispatchers, emergency communications officers, they all do the same thing. And they do it for a variety of reasons, which is incredible, right? Some of these folks come in with law enforcement degrees, EMS experience, military experience, counseling experience. It's amazing the types of folks that actually do this job. I'm extremely proud to be here representing everything that they do 24/7, and to that, I am asking for your approval for the proclamation and for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week here in Benton County to recognize the great work that they do every day.
I agree.
Yep.
Yep, totally agree.
I, I just sat over there with some very amazing people, and I'm telling you right now, there is no way I could do that job. They look at six screens at, on every call. And then the hardest part, I think, that I learned is that they get the call, they dispatch, um, they never get to find out the answers to what happens at the end. And, and emotionally, I think that is a really tough spot to be in.
Interesting point. So we got a motion and a second?
I want Jared to make the motion.
Okay. Jared, do you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to proclaim National Public Safety Telecommunication Week in Benton County.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner. Sorry. Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie and your staff.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And you are a really good speaker.
Yep, you did a great job.
Yeah. Jerry Manche.
How much time?
Three minutes.
Like a red penny. Oh, we, we, he sat here last meeting for an hour waiting for us, so we should give him at least that hour back.
Or whatever.
No, no.
Oh, I don't know that I want the whole hour.
Five minutes.
I want to be welcome back next year too.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, well, good morning, um, back again. Commissioner Benoit, we have not met yet. So, and it's nice to meet you and see you in person. Nice to meet you. Yeah, I'm the manager for the Benton County Soil and Water Conservation District. We're a local government, just like a county or a township or a city. You go to the, um, vote, you vote during the election every fo- uh, every two years. We've got, uh, a board of supervisors, there's five of them, that, that you vote for, and they ultimately make the decisions for the office. You hire a manager, and we have other staff as well that, uh, take care of the day-to-day activities. Our, our main purpose, if I boil it down into a sentence or two, is to, uh, help private citizens implement conservation practices and also do education for the community to learn and be able to, uh, practice conservation better. So we work mostly with private citizens on a voluntary basis. So that's our role.
Sorry, if I could put a plug in for you, there's a standing invitation every month to attend their monthly board meetings, usually the fourth Wednesday, last Wednesday of the month.
Yes, and there went my closing, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Sorry to steal your time.
It's okay.
Is that the closing?
I never got the hook that fast before, but thank you for that, Commissioner Johnson. Yes, we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month. I would love to have any of the commissioners come to our meeting. We do get representation from time to time. And I personally invite you to come to a meeting sometime just to see what it's all about. So. So it's the fourth Wednesday of the month? It's the fourth Wednesday of the month. Monty should have a calendar. We have had to reschedule a couple of our meetings. The June meeting had to reschedule, be rescheduled due to a conflict. But I can get you, I can get you a calendar or it's on our website.
Do you want to commit the whole listing?
Okay.
Okay.
And we get sent emails too.
We just had to reschedule the June meeting for another conflict. August was rescheduled due to one of our board members being in the military and having a conflict and then we don't want to meet the day before Christmas, so that one got rescheduled as well. Yeah. Well, thanks for having me. The the four of you that have been on the board for a while, Commissioner Kapinski as well, are used to a 23, 24 page annual report and you'll notice this one's a lot shorter. Happy to happy to hear if you like the detail in our previous reports. We were hearing they were just getting too long and quite frankly, we weren't including everything in them and so we did pare it back this year. So I'll go through the report, just the highlights in it. But if you have questions, because you've been watching our report, we present the report in previous years, I can get into other areas as well. Page one, just go through the staff. Pictures on the top right. And I just want to point out, we did have two new employees in 2024. Sitting in the front there, on the left is Nate Meyer. He's a district technician. And Meg Gable. Meg is our sustainable farming technician, a new position in the office. I will explain that a little bit later in the report. We did get two new staff. As well as on the bottom is our our current board. Most of you probably know Bernie Thol. Bernie retired, so he served through 2024. Bernie Thol served 16 years on Benton S W C D board, so. It's a long time. Good for Bernie. And he was replaced by the gentleman on the left, Bruce Brenney. So Bruce started in January, actually came to our December board meeting to get acquainted with things, so. Okay. So unless you want me to take the whole hour, we'll move on to the next page. I do like to go through the financial summary. You know, when I think of the Soil and Water District, the most important part, I think, is the work that we do. But I always get questions about the financials from you and state legislators and the public. It's not usually aware of S W C D financing. We don't have, we're the only governmental unit that doesn't have taxing, the ability to tax, no levy authority. So we get our funding from a variety of sources. And so that chart on the left there, as you can see, a big, the biggest chunk of our funding source for operations is state funding. Two years ago, the legislature appropriated what's called S W C D aid. It comes out of the general fund. Was about $161,000 in 2024. And then we write a lot of grants. We get a lot of grant funding. And of course, you can see the next largest category is Benton County, so thank you for for your allocation each year. It was $250,000 in 2024. We bring a lot of revenue into the into the county to do work and so that showed just to the right there, the economic impact. Again, this is an abbreviated section of our annual report. And as you can see, through private donations, federal funds, state funds, we brought in 5.4 million dollars in conservation funds into our county in 2024. That's a massive number. I mean, that's way over. I remember maybe, you know, five or six years ago, we eclipsed 1 million. You know, 5 million is a lot. Big chunk of that came through federal funding last year, a really big chunk. A few years ago, a former county commissioner asked me to figure out the economic impact of of the dollars that we bring into our county. And we did that a few years ago. We kept track of all the contractors that worked for Benton County, you know, resided in Benton County that were hired. We pulled receipts to see where purchases were made, what purchases were made in Benton County, and I did an estimate. I've revised that. There's a there's a new study that was put out by the Natural Resources Conservation Service, specific to conservation dollars spent in Minnesota. And I've actually got a copy of the of their study. If you're interested, I can hand that out later. But they found that for every dollar that's brought in, there's about 1.81 dollars in economic activity. So if I were to use those numbers, my previous estimates were a little bit, little bit light. They're pretty close, but a little bit light, so. You know, I think that number's pretty close. I know last year we had four Benton County contractors, all earthwork contractors, all digging at the same time. I know we had some electricians working on a couple of feedlot projects, so you know, we do, we do employ a lot of local contractors. They purchase a lot of local materials. So yeah, we're figuring about 9.9, just shy of 10 million dollars in economic activity to Benton County, building things and other activities. And you know, to put that into perspective on how that compares to Benton County's allocation, you can look at it in these terms, for every dollar Benton County provides that an S W C D, we bring back about $39 in economic activity. If you were to take credit for everything. Now, we do get other funding sources, but it's it's good value for your dollar from an economic point of view. Okay, and I can take questions along the way if you have any. With the time we've got available, I think I'm just going to move on to page three. Be remiss if I didn't recognize our outstanding conservationist for the year, Charlie Genevieve Plumbador. They were recognized at our state convention in December. And that's a really nice picture of them on top there, so congratulations. We'll be working on selecting a new conservationist of the year for Benton County coming up here pretty soon. On the bottom, one watershed, one plan. I heard a mm.
Oh, no.
2024 was a big year. We finished Mississippi St. Cloud and Commissioner Johnson, I can't thank you enough for taking that project from start to finish, the planning part. You were very dedicated. You came and talked to me, especially, you know, the first year, to get acquainted with things, to to make sure you could make good decisions. Did a good job attending meetings and so the process went, you know, as soon as it it could because of your participation, so. I, yeah, I want to thank you for that. The county board did, I don't know when, when did we start that? About three years ago, four, whatever?
I think my feet were barely wet before I got appointed to it.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, and I came here and volunteered to be the representative for Benton County at the staff level. And so I'm I'm done with that now because the planning process is done and we're into implementation, so. That sunsetted my representing Benton County on the on the planning for that that watershed, so.
Thank you for doing that, too. It was very important to have you there at those meetings.
Yeah, you're welcome. It was.
Jerry, how many dollars do do they get for implementation now after they're all?
Yeah, how many dollars do they get for implementation? They're working on the work plan right now. There's 1.291 million to distribute.
Right.
And I think you'll have a pretty good feel. Did the packets go out?
Um, yeah, I.
At the board meeting later in the week?
On Thursday this week or Thursday next week? I'd have to look at the calendar, but.
I haven't looked at the packets. Been a little busy in the office here the last couple of weeks, but. Yeah, hate to throw out a number.
Okay.
I really would.
And I know it takes, you got to get to the end before you actually get what what you get on a two-year allocation.
Yeah, so this first allocation will Emily would be able to answer these questions better, but the timeline is probably, you know, late summer before we'll see the funding. By the time we get, you know, you guys still have to enter, well, you just entered in the joint powers agreement, just having your first meeting, so it takes a little bit to get the grants going, but I suspect we'll have some funds available for a few practices, late summer for sure, early fall, and most of the funds will be available next year. Yeah. So that was a big milestone and now we're moving into the Mississippi Sartell watershed, so. So that's a big one for us, important one because it includes Little Rock Lake and we've done so much work in that lake and made such strides, we want to keep the momentum going. Okay, if we move to page four. Page four is just a selection of three of the federal cost of programs that we work work with. Our partners, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, they're in the same building. They're the federal organization that works on private lands conservation, but we partner with their programs. And these are the three that we have a pretty big hand in. They have some others, but we have a pretty big hand in these, so. Environmental Quality Sentinels Program, Conservation Reserve and Continuous Conservation Reserve. The bottom two, we do all the, pretty much all the technical assistance. We pretty much run those programs for those bottom two. And then it's a pretty equally shared partnership for for the top one there. Okay, and then moving along to pages five, six and seven, those are some of the more common programs that we have, more typical things. I'm going to skip right up to page six and talk about a couple of them. The center section there, Wetland Restorations. Had a massive year for wetland restorations last year. A couple of you were on a tour, got to see some of them. It was actually a down year. We just, the plan ran out of funding to get some of the projects done, but 37 is still a a huge number for restoring wetlands in Benton County. Yeah, like I mentioned, we had four contractors going at one time digging in those wetlands last year. That was pretty interesting. It was a wet year, the first half of the year. We had one contractor that actually had water coming in the cab of his hole as he was digging. So some pretty dedicated local contractors we have here in our county. That's a really important project, we feel. Most of the wetland restorations are done in non-cropped areas. They're areas that are either idle, sometimes maybe pastured, but they're non-cropped areas for the most part. And this this is a really good enhanced use of those areas. We want to store water on the land, so it moves slowly. We we want an area for nutrients to settle out. So our streams and lakes in the county are, you know, cleaner. We don't want flooding. We know that the rains are getting more intense, more more frequent. And if we can store the water in those wetlands, we'll we'll be better off, you know, not washing out roads in the county and having homes flooded and all those bad things that come with these these storms that are getting a little bit larger, so.
Jerry, if I could add there and interrupt you quickly and share a conversation maybe that you and I had.
Sure.
This wetland restoration things, it would be kind of nice if the state, and I say state, meaning Bowser, would recognize the work that S W C D does. You know, we've got, what, 139 acres of wetlands restored? You know, and kind of get a thank you credit instead of always fighting with wetland mitigation things on our county drainage issues? You know, I I mean, it's, it would be nice to be, I don't know if recognized is the word, but I'm betting S W C D is obviously doing their part to restore wetlands. And Benton County is working hard at that. It's not just always asking for a reduction in wetland mitigation projects. You know, it's here's recognizing restorations.
Yeah, appreciate that. I did plant the seed with some staff at the state and we'll see where that goes.
Great.
Formal recognition or maybe, you know, maybe a goal or a target to maybe implement some changes. You know, that's a long-term proposition to stay committed to, to
Sure.
try to make change like that, but no, I we're definitely, you know, a high, high, high performing colony when it comes to wetland restorations.
And I I think I'll speak for myself. I would take the changes in some of those laws versus, I don't think anybody's looking for some big recognition, but to be able to say, here's what we've done, you know, compared to what we're asking for.
Yeah. And Jerry Bowser is looking at, you know, some of the larger ditch counties, they're looking seriously at water storage right now. Because they, for the reasons you just pointed out, you know, we don't need all the silt and everything else going downstream into our lakes and rivers and I mean, some are talking 10 acres, 12 acres of storage. So.
Yeah, I don't think Nathan put the number of the amount of storage, nope, in the report, but we do store a lot of water. It's amazing the numbers.
Storage is good.
Storage is great.
Because, you know, where it settles.
There's a lot of problems.
Means rather to store it than have it, you know, go like in the Little Rock Lake or Mayo Creek.
Yeah, you know, since the cattails hybridized and we have cattails all over, they grow faster than they decompose. Actually fills a wetland in quickly. Don't quote me on the number, but on average, maybe three centimeters or something like that a year. And that's all lost storage.
Yeah.
It has an impact, so. I'd love to talk on that subject a long time, Commissioner Johnson, continue our conversation some other time, if that's okay.
Sounds like coffee and a donut time, Jerry.
Yeah. Yeah, just a, just a couple more things. On the bottom there, the soil health. I mentioned Meg Gable was the new Sustainable Farming Assistant that we hired. We we moved into what we're calling the Soil Health Initiative in Benton County. And what it is, it's just, you know, looking at different ways that you can farm that maybe have more of a focus on managing the soil. So for example, I'll just throw out a couple of examples. You know, if you reduce tillage, you're reducing the disturbance in that soil. And so all the organisms that live in the soil, like an earthworm that goes up and down and leaves channels, you're not disturbing that. And it's better for the soil and allows water to infiltrate easier, allows nutrients to go up and down a little bit easier. Cover crops are another example. Cover crops diversify the soil. They keep the organisms living a little bit longer in the fall. And all those things are good for their soil. And the reason why it's important is, again, that reduces runoff, keeps nutrients in place. This new initiative that we started last year that Meg is working on is really going well. She started and is working with a soil health team. It's just a group of farmers that meets every so often. We have a, you know, 15 minute to half an hour presentation on a topic and then it's just open discussion. It's farmers learning from farmers, you know, so we're doing those kind of activities and we're letting them kind of direct direct this program where this program goes. They told us they wanted more demonstration sites and they want to visit other farmers in the in Benton County, so that's what Meg is working on right now, so. Uh, it's been pretty popular and highly successful and I'm excited to see where that goes.
Jerry, I believe she's working like with some of the, like Central Soda and some of them to go along with, because they got, you know, they're really getting into soil health too.
Yeah.
I know she's working with Jacob Lloyd.
We did connect, yeah, we did connect with all the co-ops. Arnold's, you know, a few different groups, then, you know, crop consultants. It's more than just the farmers. The farmers is the most visible part of the work that she's done. Putting those team meetings together. We sponsored a few different events, partnered with Morrison S W C D up in Royal Ten. I'm not sure if you went to that one, Commissioner Pop? They had a a meeting this winter, was well attended, so. Yeah, there's a lot going on there. I'm very, I'm simplifying it a lot in my statements. She's doing a really good job. Last thing I'll mention. If this should be a clue on where I'm at, we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month. It's really good to to have commissioners come to our meetings once in a while. We do appreciate it. You know, I feel I feel we're in a partnership when I come present my report or come talk to you guys about other matters. It seems like we're on the same page with things. That's really important to us. So, you know, the best advice I can give you is come to a meeting once in a while or if we hold a tour or once in a while, give a personal invite to a commissioner. If there's something specific going on in their area, maybe we'll just run out and look at, you know, projects going on, you know, but if you can participate, that that helps the communication, so. With that, I'm I'm under an hour, but probably over 15 minutes. Are there?
We always enjoy your presentations.
Okay, are there any questions?
Any questions? So I I got to comment that. So Jerry is probably the best S W C D manager to get grants that I know of. I mean, Benton County is always at the top of the list because of Jerry and I think his board knows that. And I think they're like, okay, how long is Jerry going to be here is their main concern because he is really good at that. We get more grants through Benton County. What a few years ago, we were the number two recipient of grant money in the state, wasn't it?
Well, the federal funding, the Environmental Quality and Sentinels Program, we were number one for eight years in a row on a per acre basis, and I just kept.
Yeah, on a per acre because we're not a large county as far as per acre is going. We get more dollars per acre than.
We do get a lot of grant funding, yes, thank you for those comments.
They do a terrific job over there. Any other questions?
Thanks for the presentation.
So, yeah, if you're interested, I've got a copy of the report that, to study.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Benoit, I, rather than recycling last year's reports, a little more comprehensive, I grabbed it, I, I saved it for you, so.
Special today.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry, appreciate the partnership. County engineer, Chris Byrd.
All right. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, allow me a moment here to bring this up on the screen for those following along, there we go.
Could you share screen two for us, Chris?
Yes, very good, thank you for reminding me of that. We need to go back to this, and we need to. Share screen. All right. Well, my first item is to award a construction project, uh, construction contract for Project CP zero zero five dash zero four three dash zero zero six. This is the project on our County Road forty-three inside city limits of Foley here, it's in conjunction with a Foley Streets and Utilities Improvement Project. They opened bids last Thursday. The overall project had engineer's estimate of just under five point four million, and the lowest responsible bid was just under four point nine million. Uh, I didn't have this at time of submitting the agenda, but I did receive a memo from their city engineer late last week with all the bids. I, I think they received about seven bids, six bids. Uh, so very competitive project, very competitive bids. Our agreement with the City of Foley is that we concurrently award construction contracts since we have costs part of the project in there. My understanding is the city council will consider these bids at tonight's meeting. What's good is that our portion of the project, they broke those out for us, the cost that we are responsible for is just over a million dollars. One million forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, that's the construction cost. We do have about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of engineering costs, we're contributing to the engineering. They, we, we went along with their consultant to do the engineering on our roadway for that, and then their, their consultant's gonna do the construction inspection for us, so. The good news, in our five-year plan, we had set aside about one point four million dollars of wheelage tax to go towards this project. So with these bids, plus the engineering costs, we will still be under the money that we had budgeted for this project for twenty twenty-five. So I think those are all good news items. Though before you today is a resolution to award a, a construction contract, accept the bids. The lowest responsible bidder was Keakley Underground of Kimball, Minnesota. Keakley does have a history with doing projects in Foley, the last street improvement project, Keakley was that contractor with very satisfactory results, so no concerns there. Yeah, so it's my recommendation as the county engineer to accept those bids and award a construction contract concurrently with the City of Foley for the reconstruction of County Road forty-three in town here.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to award the contract for project for the County Road forty-three.
Forty-three.
In Foley. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Go ahead.
All right. Well, the next item is same thing, award a construction project, now these are for county road projects. It was a tied project, County Road twenty-five overlay, County Road sixty-six overlay, and then part of our maintenance patch. And so, you didn't have this in your packet, but I, I created a map quickly just to show those projects as they were identified in our adopted five-year plan. So this is the, the thin patch overlay on County Road twenty-five, this portion of County Road sixty-six overlay up here. And then, as part of maintenance, we're gonna overlay County Road nine from four up to, to five here. So we received two bids last Friday, or the Friday before, I suppose, I should say, the twenty-first, from Knife River Corporation and OMG Midwest, doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials, they were the only two bidders. Our engineer's estimate for these projects was one million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. And the lowest responsible bid came in at one million, forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, or twenty-three point three nine percent below our estimate. So, really good prices, and, and the reason for that is these mixed prices. We were estimating based, based on past trends, paying about seventy dollars per ton for bituminous mix. And our low bid came in at fifty-eight and fifty-five dollars a ton. Even in our maintenance patch, we were estimating sixty dollars a ton, cause it has a different oil on that, since it's just a, a patch. We got forty-eight dollars and sixty cents per ton for bituminous mix. We have not seen prices that low in probably ten years maybe, so. That just shows that these contractors are hungry, and thus the reason we mentioned that at our last cow, is like, well, maybe we should consider moving some projects up to capitalize on, on these low bid prices, since these contractors haven't picked up much work is what we're hearing out there, and are still hungry for work this summer. But just today, just asking you to consider awarding a construction contract to Knife River Corporation for the tied projects on County Road twenty-five, sixty-six, the maintenance patch on Cassa nine.
So moved.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded to award the contracts that Chris presented before us, questions?
Mr. Chair, Chris, thanks for that explanation of the twenty-three percent under. You know, we normally don't see that, we see, you know, five to ten at, at best.
That, that's right, yeah.
It's probably hard for our engineer to decide what price of oil to use, you're based off last year's prices, I'm sure.
Yeah, as you guys were considering other contracts and construction, we look at trends in past years and inflate that for, you know, kind of an inflationary percentage just going this year. And then, yeah, we get these low bids, so it looks like we overestimated, but, I mean, I think secretly engineers, we always hope our bids come in under what we estimate, just so we can know we budgeted enough for the project and stuff. But yeah, twenty-three percent is, is quite a bit, so.
So, we got a motion and a second, call the question back.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Now, we're gonna talk about construction projects that were already awarded, so our Cassa seven reconstruction project, we received word from our contractor a little over a week ago that this week, beginning in April, they wanted to start work again on Cassa seven. Well, we didn't have any inspectors to do that, so we scrambled, made some phone calls, and WSB had an inspector that was available. Now remember, Cassa seven receives some federal money, it's on a state aid highway, so those inspectors inspecting the construction work have to have a number of certifications, meaning that the state has recognized that they're qualified to inspect and test the construction materials being incorporated in that project. So, fortunately for us, WSB had an inspector available with all the necessary certifications that meet the federal requirements for federally funded road construction projects. And we put together this agreement and got it signed by them just last week. So I'm asking the board to consider entering into this professional services contract for construction inspection on Cassa seven. You know, they don't have anybody out there right now, but if we get it signed today, we will have that inspector out there this week. So the contractor started this week with traffic control, erosion control, and within a couple weeks, they're gonna be setting box culvert sections at seven and fifty-one.
Okay. Questions, Jared?
Yes, Chris, how many hours do you think that this person's gonna be on this Cassa seven project?
Yeah, very good question, so we have that at, at the last page of this agreement, is a kind of a scope and fee, is what we call it. And we, we, we estimate that's forty hours a week for several weeks through this summer. It's an hourly contract, so our goal is that this person is highly experienced, has all the certifications, we just hired some new engineering technicians. We're gonna expose those new technicians to the same project and probably be trained under this consultant inspector this summer. We don't wanna throw our new folks to the wolves just yet, but kinda study under this consultant inspector out there on the project. So, we're hoping, and we're confident that the, these hours will be less when we get to the end of this project. But we wanted to make sure that we had enough hours to, to cover, yeah, forty hours a week, what is that? When, yeah, it's about twelve, fourteen weeks, sixteen weeks?
Six hundred and forty hours, yeah.
Yep, sixteen weeks, so that would be about, yeah, four months, so the contract has, first week in August, that all work has to be completed. So, it's things like rain days, if the contractor's not working, this consultant inspector's
Won't work.
no, won't be out there. And, and we think this is a maximum number of hours. Maybe towards the end of the summer, if our, our inspectors, engineering technicians are feeling more confident, we'll have them assuming more of that responsibility and reduce the hours of the, the consultant.
Is that, is that a call that you can make?
Yes.
Okay.
The way we, we set it up with them is, yeah, that's why it's an hourly basis, kind of a not to exceed thi- this, this amount.
But if you, if you see fit that our inspectors could be doing that, you can say, well, we, we don't need you today?
Yep.
All right.
We could certainly do that, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I gotta, just a comment, I, I gotta stop pulling hair out of certain parts of my head, cause I got no hair left. On this, this is insane, we're, I mean, I get that, that, Chris, we're in a pinch right now. But we would be paying somebody three hundred and some thousand dollars over the course of a year at these rates. And we can't find anybody, we, we need to figure out something, because we could have this done in-house, correct? If we had somebody?
Correct, if we had, and, and that's one of my items, give you an update.
Yeah, so stay tuned, right, yeah.
Yeah, once our staff becomes trained and has completed all those certification classes, this is very much work that we would do. The, the, I would point out here that the, the rate is a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, and that's the rate, so that has the company's overhead and their benefits and everything. You look at what we're paying our engineering technicians with fringe benefits and everything, we're not near a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, so.
But I, I think where Commissioner Kapinski's coming from is like, why aren't we hiring somebody of this quality to work in Benton County? You know, I mean, it looks like a money-saving deal, right, Kapinski, Mr. Kapinski?
Yeah, well, it, it is, if you can find the people. The problem is, we get, you know, government gets in their own way on all these contracts and unions and stuff like that. And we, we just can't move fast enough to hire these people or keep them, because the public side is, they can, they can move and shake at their own, at their own rate.
Right. Well, to your point, Commissioner Kapinski, remember, we did just approve, not steps, but career ladder for engineering, so hopefully we can get to that point. But as, as of now, we don't have that person, and we've gotta do something.
I don't believe we can ever get to that type of pay.
Probably not.
We sit today.
But we, but we could have those people do that.
Could have, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Chris, is this cost included in the construction cost, or not, or is this additional cost?
No, it's not included in the construction cost, but it is within our budget for engineering services this year. So in the twenty twenty-five budget, we had money in there for inspections, so. So it is a levy cost, but it's, it's included in the twenty twenty-five approved budget.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the engineering cost for County Road seven.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye, thanks, Chris, great work, though.
Yeah, well, thank you for approving that, now, to this, to that point, though, I keep going too far.
You're gonna have to move it up first.
There we go. Um, okay, before we get to the county surveys, I had on the agenda, just to provide you an update of our staffing. So, as was noted, the board approved for twenty twenty-five, a kind of a career ladder type position. So, where before, we had a civil engineering technician, and then we had a civil engineering technician senior. Now, we have civil engineering technician one through four, plus a civil engineering technician senior. So there's actually five career ladder rungs that somebody could be placed at. As of today, we have all three of our positions filled, they're not on board yet, by the end of this month, though, we'll have them all in the office working. So I am very happy to say that we have all three positions filled. And interestingly enough, the one, we have a civil engineering technician one, we were able to hire one that met the qualifications for a civil engineering level two, and we were able to hire one that met the qualifications for a civil engineering level three. So, we couldn't have planned it that way, but we have three approved engineering positions, and we were able to hire one, two, and three. One thing, I, once again, thank you for approving that, what we heard through the interview and application process is, one of the questions we ask is, how did you hear about our position, and then after reviewing the position, what made you decide to apply with it? And most commonly was, we heard comments like, well, this looked like a place where I could grow, a place where I can have a career. So I think that, I really do believe that that helped us with our recruitment this, this time around, to show that today, you may not have all the qualifications, but we have a process and a progress to get you to a higher level that does come with additional pay over time, so. We're really excited in our department to have them on board, knowing full well that we're gonna have to train them and do things differently in the past. So in the past, we would have probably not moved forward with a contract like what we just did with WSB and thrown these new people to the wolves out there on that project, and, and that doesn't bode well for us. So we're gonna take this opportunity to use what we have budgeted, use some expertise on the consultant side to train our new lesser experienced staff in. But fully confident someday, we will have those highly qualified people working in our department, and we will be inspecting our own construction projects.
Mr. Chair, Chris, which one of those levels, let's just fast forward a little bit, you've got one, two, and three, which one of those levels could do that project eventually?
Uh, will probably most likely be the level three.
The level, okay.
Cause that, the, each, in one of our position descriptions has additional classes that you need to attend and pass to get that certification. So you, you would have to at least be at the level three to fully inspect this, this federal funded project, so.
Well, and sometimes that's what we have to do to get those points, remember, we have Bogart Peterson on board to help get through our wetland lead, so sometimes those are the things you need to do.
Yeah, so, other openings in the department, so this year, we started out with those three openings. Soon after, learned that the office coordinator has, had accepted a promotion over in the sheriff's department, so that was a fourth opening. We had the environmental technician slash ditch inspector opening, that was a fifth one, and then we had an operator engineer position come opening. So we had six, uh, six positions open, that's more than twenty-five percent of our department of only twenty-two. But things have progressed very well this month, March was a very busy month for us with interviews, reviewing applications, and things like that. So as of today, we have five out of those six openings filled. The environmental technician slash ditch inspector actually had his first day yesterday, so they are on board. We actually have a meeting this afternoon with the landowner about a county ditch, so we're getting him learning about ditches right away. The office coordinator is the last position that remains open. We have candidates that we've been, a candidate that we've been talking to, we just haven't arrived there at a, a acceptance of an offer yet, so. So once again, I'm excited that we started the first quarter of this year with a lot of vacancies, but here, we're going to have them filled very soon. So I'm excited for that. Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Jared. Sorry.
So I just want to comment, Chris, great job. I imagine you're working pretty well with the HR department?
Yes, we've put a lot of work on the HR department. And I have to admit, we were pushy at times. As kind of already alluded to, the market out there is still pretty tight. I think there's still a lot more openings than there are workers to fill them. And that was a fear that I had is that, what if we're talking to somebody and they get snatched up during that process? So thank you to HR staff, mostly, if not all, Emily, for working on that and trying to meet our timelines as we, we were pushing hard to get those filled sooner than later.
Well, and to elaborate on the career ladders, that, that is, I got to give the colleagues, my colleagues, the rest of the board, the administration, everybody, these career ladders are huge in our county. And I just heard it from the culture team last week, I believe, yeah, it was last week, just on how important career ladders are. They make a difference, and you just, you just pointed that out, that people look at that. So we need to stay on task and, and we'll make sure we keep building these career ladders so people do have a place to go. So thanks to everybody involved on that. It made a difference right away.
Chris, so with the hiring of the grade-three engineer, how much time do you think that individual will be spent with WSB on that road?
It's hard to say now. They're not coming on board until, they're probably the last one to come on board. They actually work for a consultant right now.
Okay.
We think that maybe in the short term, we'll have the two out there. And that two comes to us graduating from the St. Cloud Technical College program this spring. So he's actually starting before his graduation ceremony in May. So he's starting in April. We're excited about that. So I think the level three that we actually hired is going to be more of our designer, our CAD person and designer possibly, with some time in the field. So.
I just think it's important that we get them out in the field, you know, and using the experience of WSB to help them further.
Yeah. There's so many things that it's hard to teach without experience, things like project documentation. You don't learn that in a classroom setting. You learn that by being out in the field and watching contract. Even just contractor interaction, you can't learn that in a classroom or in a book. You just have to have experience working with contractors, having daily conversations, sometimes tense conversations about work or rework and things like that. So yeah, you're right. That's our goal this summer is to get those out there in the field and getting those real-world, real-life experiences.
Okay. Right.
All right, and then the added agenda item. So this came in, approved by our attorney Michelle and our county surveyor Light last week. So as you are all aware, we contract the county surveyor functions, and we've had a longstanding relationship with Jay Witstock. He was part of a consultant for a number of years, and then in recent years, kind of broke away and has started his own consulting firm. So this would be an update to the, to his professional services contract that through the end of 2026. So we have a budgeted amount of about sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. That's been the budget for a number of years. And that started from when we were doing the section corner remonumentation project. Now that that project has wrapped up, it's more of a maintenance mode that he's doing. Interestingly enough, though, as time has progressed, hourly fees have increased. So we've been able to, as, as the work demand has decreased, decreased, the fees have increased, but we've still been able to work within the budgeted amount that we started probably back in the 2010s or before. So.
Mr. Chair, Chris, I was just gonna, a couple of questions. Of the sixty-eight grand we're budgeting, historically, what have we been spending?
It really depends on the year.
We're getting close to it?
It's like forty thousand, and in some years, we've been right up there at sixty-eight thousand. The last two or three years, we've been well under, probably in the low fifties for spending that.
And then refresh my memory, but when we mapped CASA twenty-five, was that a separate thing or was that included in?
That would have been come out of this sixty-eight thousand dollar budget, yeah.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the contact with Jay Witstock.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Anything else?
Well, I just wanted to add, you know, in this mode of training, I had a conversation with our, with Jay about this. Since we have, you know, surveying is part of that function of our engineering technicians. He's agreed to even provide some field training on instrument and construction surveying and stuff. So it'll be part of this contract as well. So we're using all of our resources available to train our new staff. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Perfect.
And I think that's the end of my items.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Do you want to go down?
Yep.
I'll recess the county board and turn it over to Public Health.
I'll call over the Benton County Community Health Board. Note that all members are present. Approve or amend the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Have anything to add?
I do, actually. So initially, it was one, Jaclyn had messaged me a little bit earlier, maybe like an hour ago, and asked me to add one more thing that just came up this morning. So the first thing that we would have today is to just provide an update to the community health board on the COVID-19 federal funds. And then the second item that was not on there is just an update. We got, are just looking for a letter for support from Public Health for children's dental services. I'm going to more of that in a minute here.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the amended agenda. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Okay. Consent item, agenda number two. We only have one. Approve or amend the community health board regular meeting minutes of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Beth, roll call.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Abstain.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Okay, next. Consider the request for approval to apply and accept funds for the Public Health Professional Development Grants. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. So, thank you. And I should just introduce myself one more time. I met Pam, if that's okay, briefly, I think, onboarding in the public health area. So I'm Courtney Ferreira, one of the public health nursing supervisors. I'm kind of pinching today for Jaclyn, so bear with me. So yeah, so the first one, the family home visiting department, we have an opportunity for funding. It was available for a professional development grant. There's a couple of upcoming trainings that we were planning for staff that actually fall under this grant activity. So we saw this as an opportunity to offset our own costs and are bringing it to the board to apply. The amount is approximately eleven hundred and fifty dollars between the three staff, Benton County Public Health staff. We request the community health board approval to apply. In addition, requesting the community health board approval to accept funds if awarded.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any further discussion on this item? Beth, call.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Commissioner Kapinski?
I have said aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, next. Update, the COVID fund nineteen.
And actually, I'm going to jump to the.
Letter of support?
Yeah, letter of support, if that's okay. I do have Mariah on to answer any questions if there are any. So Mariah and Kayla, two of our public health staff, they've been coordinating with the children's dental service. They received a request from them for Public Health to write a letter of support for a grant application that they're working on. Let's do this Friday. They're applying for a rural early childhood grant through Medica, and their goal is to get the grant to expand dental services in Benton County area. We'd love to provide them a letter if possible. With that, we're requesting the community health board approval to submit that letter to the children's dental services so that the, so that they can include that with their grant application for this Friday.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support.
I'll second it for discussion, Mr. Chair. Do you know what the grant amount is?
Yeah, I know that Mariah was on. I don't know if Kayla's also on, but you can take yourself off mute and any questions, I'll direct towards them, if that's okay.
Yeah, hello. Good morning, commissioners. As far as the grant amount for what children's dental services would be applying for, we don't know the specific dollar amount. They were just specifically requesting a letter of support from our public health department to support their work. However, about a month ago, Jaclyn brought up that we would also be applying for the same grant. And we, funny enough, were applying for very similar initiatives as children dental services was to bring some of those mobile clinic services into our county. So Benton County Public Health, as a department, will be applying for the same grant, but for different initiatives, which will be around fifty thousand, but could be up to a hundred thousand.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, we have a motion and a second and further discussion. Beth?
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the COVID nineteen.
Yes, we'll jump over to the COVID nineteen funding update. So Jaclyn was previously scheduled for PTO, like I said, today. She may or may not be on. I know she was going to try to make it if possible. But the following presentation will hopefully answer most of the questions. If there are any further ones, I can definitely take notes and bring it back to her and then present it at the next board meeting or send in an email if it's more urgent than that, too. So. All right, so let's see here. So Benton County Public Health, as of February twenty twenty-five, I should back up. So on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, our public health department was notified by MDH to immediately terminate and cease all program and activities related to the COVID nineteen funding. So this funding was actually originally expected to end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, following the pandemic, but was amended and extended to June thirtieth of this year. That was for the vaccine portion of the funds. And as of three thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, the ELC portion of the COVID nineteen funds, the non-vaccine portion, was planned to end as well. So since that extension, we've been able to work on spending down these funds and transitioning the work activities under the funding sources. We did not have any salaries budgeted primarily under these funds either. And then to add, as of February twenty twenty-five, we received five hundred and thirty-nine thousand in federal funding reimbursement for public health response and recovery efforts to address the COVID nineteen pandemic and impacts. And then just to note, that does not include March or April. We are still processing those as well. All right, so the next step, so the final invoicing is due this Friday to MDH for all their grant activities that were up through three twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and prior. Our fiscal team has been amazing, and they've been already taking steps to meet this deadline. We just want to say a huge thank you to our public health and fiscal staff for their swift response and promptness in meeting this timeline on such a short notice. We have a really amazing team that's able to, to jump forward and do all of this for us. And to add, so far, like a preliminary cost impact, so as of the end of February, we had seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four left on the non-vaccine funds for the remaining use through March of twenty twenty-six. And then a hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars for the vaccine remaining funds. And that was through June of twenty twenty-five originally. And then again, those numbers do not include March and April because we're still working on those, too.
I want to thank Jaclyn for jumping up, and your team for jumping up, because we got really short notice, and I was in conversation with her right away. You know, Monty, thank you for working with Jaclyn, too.
Of course.
So the number I got roughly is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand from Jaclyn of what we're going to be giving back in general. It's pretty close to that number, right, Monty?
I was thinking of the numbers you just cited. Did you say seventy and one forty?
One forty, but we still have to bill out a lot yet to, for all of that.
Through April.
Correct, yep. So, so I think, you know, Jaclyn gave me a number of about one twenty-five.
Yeah.
You know, somewhere in that area. Won't know until all the billing's done.
I think they're working on that. We closed out everything as of yesterday for the month of March. So we'll kind of have a little bit of a difference there, too.
Yeah, this all came down in about a two-day notice, you know, and then got notified at, what, ten to five last week?
Yeah.
It's pretty crazy.
So I did just want to recognize and highlight a few things that we were able to do with these funds. So I'll just kind of highlight some of those. I mean, we're sad to see this go, but we're able to pivot the work that we've done pretty swiftly after hearing about this and wanted to take a moment to highlight, again, all the, the good work that public health and department staff with Minnesota Responds volunteers that we were able to do with this funding while we were able to have it. So even with like the short-term grants, the impact in our community was pretty immense, so. So I'll just kind of go through briefly. So again, with this funding, we were able to offset the cost to the county in addressing the pandemic. So just some of the things that we were able to do. So Benton County Public Health, with Minnesota Responds volunteers, have administered over forty-five hundred doses to date. We were able to hold forty vaccine clinics in our area and also provided support to the state for vaccination sites as well. Just some photos there. So some of the efforts continued here. So contact tracing and case investigations were performed. We partnered with Sherburne Centra Care Stern and Sterns for community vaccination sites as well. Ongoing research and data review things that are listed under there, and then just some local recognitions as well that we listed. And then just some recovery efforts highlighted, just kind of in summary. So we were able to provide mask and respirator distributions, COVID nineteen test kits. We were able to mass dispense those to the community. Some communication activities, so billboard campaigns, social media outlets, countywide mailings, news media and community health education. And then for community education and development, we were able to support childcare provider training, community partner work, and different conversations with that, and then also staff development as well. So in addition to the activity, or sorry, the active response, while we were in the height of the pandemic, the extension of the funding allowed our public health department to work on addressing impacts from COVID in the community. We were able to shift from response to recovery to also addressing the post-COVID needs in our community as well. It included a lot of partnership with our local schools, various businesses in the community, with the community members, and then to protect the health of our community and prevent the spread of the infection as well. So we're also making efforts to help promote health and catch up on health screenings, for example. These, again, were just in addition to some of those things that we were able to do. And again, just some other things, community mental health activities, mental health matters campaigns, public health well-being surveys and various vicarious trauma education for youth prevention and recovery activities. So some handwashing things that we were able to do in school classrooms, fine motor skills and development for early childhood development for schools, speech catch-up, group reflection practice, just to name a few. And then response and readiness activities. We had emergency operations planning and response readiness technology, as well as mobile clinics, advanced capabilities and response to and equipment for readiness as well. And then this is a great example, like I said, for how a short-term. And then, this is a great example, like I said, for how a short-term funding source was able to help offset the cost and help us complete the work that we needed most during this time. So the buckets on the screen are those areas in public health responsibility. In statute, highlighted in the yellow, are all the areas that the funding helped us to address and offset the costs, for examples. Also, a good example of how even the time-limited grant funding can help us to perform our work within the statutes and make an impact within our local jurisdiction as well. And then, in closing, we just wanted to say, as we close out these funds, this is not an all-inclusive list of everything that we've been able to do. But it serves as a thank you to our Public Health team and the response and recovery efforts and flexibility addressing the current needs in the community at any given time. So we're sad to see the funding go. Public Health is a field that evolves and grows, adapts, pivots and changes with the needs of our community over time. We know that we will still be working and addressing the after-effects of COVID long-term. However, we are confident that the work in our department will be able to promote, protect and advance the health of our community with continued, as we continue to adapt and adjust as the pand- as we complete the pandemic here. Yeah, we have an amazing team that are very dedicated to this work that we do. And with that, any other questions that I can bring back to Jaclyn or answer for you?
I want to give the city of Sauk Rapids a big thank you because we're always using their community room for all of this stuff for vaccines and everything. That needs to be shared.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you for filling in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anything else? Is this, is this an action item? No, just an update.
Just an update.
Just an update. Is there anything else you'd like to ask or talk about?
Not that I have today.
Well, thank you very much, Courtney, for filling in.
I appreciate it.
With that, we'll adjourn the Benton County Community Health Board at ten fifty-one and turn it over to the Board Chair.
Ten fifteen, we're on. Commissioner, meeting updates.
I can start if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
March nineteenth, Highway twenty-three Coalition Board Meeting, virtually. Again, they tend to meet down in the Wilmer area and I tend to join virtually. March twenty-fourth, Commissioner Pop and I attended the DITCH Subcommittee Meeting. We had a very good discussion for well over an hour. One of the highlights that came out of it, after some reading, from my perspective through statute, there was some items in there that talked about the payback periods. I know we talked about ten, but I think there's some verbiage in there that maybe would allow us to go to fifteen. Michelle was checking on that. She's gonna verify that back with us, but I think that looks positive that we might get to fifteen years. So that's gonna be a plus for some of those landowners. Of course, last Monday, our COW five-year road plan, et cetera. And then I was able to attend about three-fourths of the leadership conference up in Grandview. It was a very good conference, I thought. Pretty good attendance. I think there was a hundred and twenty or so there. So that was, it was a very good conference. I came home Thursday evening, so I missed the Friday morning workshop, but other than that, it was very good. That's all I had.
Commissioner Kapinski, you wanna?
Sure. We had the radio board meeting last Wednesday that was uneventful. As usual, I mean, like I said, that one there is tough because, I mean, there's really not a lot to do. It's here there to vote on things that are already decided. Let's see, we did have the, I was at the AMC board meeting on Friday, as well as I joined Thursday evening at the, what was it, Leadership Conference. So the AMC board meeting, that was, that was, that got a little heated when it come to all the taxes and, and, you know, people not understanding what they're voting for. It's happening in every county that, that literally, they don't understand until it's too late. And they don't understand, you know, the taxpayers don't understand what they're really voting for. I brought up the fact that, you know, the Sauk Rapids, you know, people thought they were getting a field house. I just heard that again last Wednesday when I was picking up tabs. There was, there was a couple of people that thought Sauk Rapids was getting a field house. And I had to tell them, no, they weren't. They were getting two football fields and early childhood building. So, you know, and more than that, and a track and stuff, but the airport deal was brought up. I know Terrell Clark was there. And I just said, we just need to stay in front of that. And, I mean, every, everybody's just adding lines to taxpayers' property tax. You know, it just shows up additional lines and they keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So it was a, it was a pretty, I'll say, heated conversation with, with everything going on at the government with walls and stuff, so. That's really about it.
Okay, thanks, Jared.
Okay, so I actually, when I came back from vacation, joined in on the opioid development committee. It's moving forward. They have things in place now. There'll be more to come with that. I also was at the Sauk Rapids Council Meeting and EDA meeting with Amanda from BEP. And one interesting, one interesting thing that was brought up was, what are we gonna do about childcare? They're talking about, is there any facilities or anything going up for that? And just an interesting conversation. And then the COW, of course, and then the leadership training, too, which was very good. Again, this is actually the second time I seen his. But it was very good. This one was better than the first one, to be honest with you, more just for the Commissioners, so.
On March eighteenth, I went to a meeting for East Side Board Two Quarterly Meeting. Very interesting. Got to meet a lot of business owners on the east side of St. Cloud, which is my district. And at that meeting, there was still concerns brought up about Lincoln Center. So I, I think City of St. Cloud, it sounds like, is moving forward with some things with that. What? I don't know at this time. Some of them are reluctant to share right now. March nineteenth, I went to a Sheriff's Department meeting just in my goal to try and get to know each department. On March twentieth, had an MS four audit that I sat in with Minden Township on for last year. They had a audit for their MS four. And then March twenty-first, I did a ride-along with a sheriff from one to five. On March twenty-second, I, very late, I attended the Foley Community Connect and Expo. It sounds like they had served probably three hundred and fifty people for breakfast. That's awesome. On March twenty-fourth, I attended the St. Cloud City Council Meeting. Again, some discussion with the council on Lincoln Center. And March twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, I did the AMC Leadership Conference.
I, too, attended the expo. I got there at nine o'clock and got out of there at ten thirty. And of course, I brought my wife. And yes, we stopped at every booth. There was over sixty vendors, which was a great showing. And of course, all the vendors either knew me or my wife, so it was, but it was very fun, very enjoyable.
Mr. Chair, too, I'm glad you brought that up. I was able to get the expo also and I spent some time with Mariah and Kayla in the.
The room.
The room, in plain sight.
Yep.
And learned a lot of things. That was a very interesting conversation. They did have a very good turnout. I was there about ten thirty or so, so.
Just missed each other, yeah.
Anyways, very good expo. Thank you for putting that on. Yep.
And, you know, speaking about that, I think maybe this is something that the county should probably think about, look at getting involved in, too, with public health.
We had a couple, there was a couple of public health booths there.
Yep, correct. There was four, I think there was four or five booths, so. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm done.
On the eighteenth, I had the library. We set preliminary budget. Not as good as last year for us. I mean, we're gonna have, I think right now it looks at about a forty-three-hundred-dollar increase. Not bad, but.
We were looking for a ten percent decrease.
I did, too. And that's to be determined because we got, we still got surplus money, but it's, I mean, the surplus money is gradually going downhill, so it's not gonna be there forever.
They don't need that big fund balance.
The fund balances, we're at five and a half months and we gotta be at least four, so we're gonna a little bit less. Then on the twentieth, I had the AIS and Rice, and that was in your packet. They gotta do a little better record-keeping on what they're doing up there. Then, of course, me and Commissioner Johnson had the DITCH interviews or DITCH.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee meeting. That was interesting. We got some things I think we can work on there. And then we had the highway and everybody was there, so. That's, and then, of course, the Leadership Conference. And that's all that I had. Set Committee of the Holes.
Right. Well, they just won. So Evan would like to invite you to come over to GLT Offices to discuss what he calls finishes. So basically, it's all the look and feel of the building. Floor surfaces, counter surfaces, what color of exterior brick, all those issues. He'd like you to visit at their offices because they have samples and they can show you things on the screen. I also thought, too, is that'd be a great opportunity to just make our final plans for the, for the first open house. Where it's kind of review the program. And also, too, preview the video. So Bill Colton tells me he may have the video ready by Friday, latest Monday. But I, of course, it's really important for you all to see that video before it's broadcast publicly. So Evan offers you Monday morning, the seventh, or Tuesday morning, the eighth. And he's, he's open to start as early as seven thirty AM, so. So again, Monday morning, the seventh, or Tuesday morning, the eighth. What would work best?
I can't do the seventh.
So the eighth, Tuesday, the eighth? Excuse me. So.
Well, that gives us, I mean, don't we have a meeting?
The first one is, is it Thursday? Let's see here.
I thought we were in Rice on the eighth.
Excuse me, it's Wednesday, right.
Rice was canceled, though.
No, we are, we are in Sauk Rapids Wednesday night.
Okay.
The ninth, at six. That's the first open house, Wednesday night, the sixth. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, the timeframe is really short here, so.
Could we do early Tuesday morning? I don't know if that works for everybody.
So again, Evan starts early, seven thirty, so it's the eight AM Tuesday morning. That would be the eighth at GLT Offices.
Jared, that work for you?
Yeah.
Seven, gonna bring coffee and rolls.
I'll, I'll ask.
Eight o'clock. It's eight o'clock and we need coffee.
Do you all know where GLT Offices are, by the way?
Downtown by the.
Right across the street from the old courthouse, Sterns County Courthouse.
They got a big sign up.
So it's on, it'd be on the south side.
South side of it, yeah.
Right, south side, right across from the old courthouse, yeah. Yeah.
Can you send out the address?
Sure, of course. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So.
Tuesday, the eighth.
Yeah, that'll work.
You know, I just want to make sure, I know, I thought I heard Commissioner Johnson, you thought there was gonna be an open house at Rice. And let's, I wanna make sure everyone is, is, is good on our dates. So, again, the first one is April ninth, six PM at Sauk Rapids Community Room. And then the next one is the following week.
Sixteenth.
Uh, let's see here.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth, here. So we begin facility tours at four, and then we have an open house beginning at six. And again, I'm recruiting folks to lead tours. So far, I've got some volunteers from department heads. So we got four or five people to lead those tours. And then the next day, we are in Rice at six, Rice City Hall on April seventeenth, Rice City Hall.
Yep, and I had that on my calendar. I had neglected to delete the Rice one on the eighth.
Starting to panic there for.
Yeah, I was gonna go twice.
I think they had something going on. I know you wanted to have Rice first, but they had something going on in their council chamber that night. So, um, so I just want to make sure everyone is good on that. And of course, then your public hearing on the CIP is gonna be May sixth, and that's an evening meeting at six. May sixth in the evening at six, so. So that, yeah, it's a nice time then, on Tuesday, the eighth, then, to review the video and just kind of get settled on the program for the open houses, so.
So are we gonna have an open house review prior to the six PM on the sixth, where they could tour or not?
On the sixth, yes. The plan was to have tours again at four PM on the sixth, yes.
That's the second tour night.
Yeah, another opportunity for tours on May sixth at four.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Move for approval to COW, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Most men made in second, can you call the question, Beth?
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Carried. Anything else come before the County Board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did forget to mention that I did met with staff and Monty, was there. We went over all the technology on the building and kind of put in place like access control, cameras and AV stuff, so.
Thank you for all your time on that, Commissioner. I know that created a very full day.
One, one last thing that I, that is kind of important that I, I forgot to bring up well is we did talk at that AMC Board meeting about all these grant things that come out through, you know, public health and everything like that. And everybody keeps kind of feeding the fuel by accepting these grants by saying, oh, it's, it's, it's government-funded, right? And, and everybody's starting to go, starting to push back and say, like, hey, maybe we gotta stop doing that and don't ask for more money and ask for less regulations.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, one of the things that, we're, we're just as guilty of it. If we don't take the money, somebody's, somebody else is going to. But maybe we gotta start saying, even if it's a hundred percent grant-funded, do we need it?
Right.
So we got, just, just something to keep thinking about. That's all I got.
Actually, I'll join in on that one. So, yeah, with MDH and all that, too, we're having conversations about all of this, too, Jared, so thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, anything else? Or adjourn at eleven oh six?